...in Finance Week, and you may recognize the activity that they're doing right there. This is one of the budget activities that you all take part of during the budget process. The Berg Buck's Activity, that's a little bit of a tongue twister, but they had a chance to take part in that and allocate their dollars to certain departments in town. Week four, we were over at Harrisburg Park with our Parks and Rec Director Jim Spina and Assistant Parks and Rec Director Sean Marble. They had a presentation of all of our Parks and Recreation opportunities and programming, and then they took a tour of the park, including showing the what's to come with the turf fields on Fields One and Two at Harrisburg Park. Week five, back here at Town Hall with our Town Council and Administration Week, we went over more of a deep dive of the functions of our local government, how our government is set up in a county manager form, and then they got to hear directly from some of you. Thank you for making yourself available that Wednesday evening and coming out and speaking. And then the picture you see on the right side of your screen was a little activity where they just had to divide up and decide what was county operations and what was city and town operations. Week six, we ventured a little bit outside of Harrisburg to the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office, the headquarters, and this was a really in-depth presentation. Thank you Captain Nash for setting this up with a teaser presentation as you see right there, and then we had a tour of the detention facility, and our participants really got to see the full scope of what the partnership with the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office offers to Harrisburg. Week seven, we were over at our Public Works Facility. They had a presentation with our Town Engineer Devon Houston and our Public Works Director John Young, hearing about all the upcoming projects that the town is working on, and then getting a tour of our fleet and public works operations. Week eight, it was a new addition to the program this year with our Economic Development Department really in full motion now. Ryan McDaniels was able to set us up at Saddle Creek, one of the logistic firms here in Harrisburg, the largest logistic firm, and this was actually my first time also touring that facility. And it's just, I don't think a lot of people know what they do and what's back there, and so that was a real treat to go and see that operation, as well as we heard from the Cabarrus EDC, not only on economic development in Harrisburg, but throughout the county and the different programs that the county offers as well. And then week nine, we ended where we started, back here at Town Hall with our Planning and Zoning Week led by our Assistant Planning and Zoning Director Shelley DeHart. She took a tour of all of our planning zoning operations, the UDO, the One Harrisburg Strategic Comprehensive Plan, anything planning and zoning related, Shelley was able to cover that. So with that being said, here's some feedback that we did receive that I wanted to share with you all about the program this year. One of our participants said, "The Citizens Academy was a great opportunity to learn more about the way the town operates. I truly enjoy living in Harrisburg and feel honored to have gone through the academy. Thank you to everyone in the town for offering your time." And that was from Jeremiah. And one more piece of feedback that we received, "Great experience. Thank you so much for organizing this. It has been great to meet people in the class and all of the town staff members during the academy. Looking forward to find some more ways to continue to stay involved." So I would like to recognize each of our Citizens Academy participants, and I'll call your name up one by one. You'll come up and get your award and take a picture with our mayor, and then we'll do it one by one so it doesn't get too crowded up here. First, we have Leela, who I don't think she's with us tonight. So we'll bring up Ethel Charity. Ms. Deborah Lee. She's not able to be with us tonight. We have Ms. Heather Swett. She is not able to be with us tonight, as well as Famicia O'Kea. She is not able to be with us tonight as well. Jeremiah Robinson. He is not able to be with us tonight. Mrs. Pat Hamilton. And Mr. Dylan McCann. Thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you for celebrating our participants with me. Any questions or comments?
Just thank everyone for doing that. I always say I think every resident should have to go through Citizens Academy, so thank you guys for taking the time to really participate and learn more about Harrisburg. We really appreciate you guys doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, does she? Oh, oh, oh. We did not have anyone sign up this evening for public comment, which is very strange given all of the folks in the room. So thank you all for joining us tonight. We will move into the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented? Second? Second. All in favor? Motion is carried. We will move into our communications area, and we will start off with our Town Manager, Rob Donham.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A couple items to note for this evening, and then I will keep it relatively short. I know Mayor's got a lot, and we have a relatively heavy agenda, but the last meeting that we had Thursday, we had talked about the historic mill contract and perhaps having that ready for today's meeting. Unfortunately, that was a little too aggressive, and we weren't going to be able to have that tonight. It'll be ready in a day or two, but we're okay kind of informally moving through that process, and we'll have that ready on the December agenda instead. You will notice, though, the turf at Fields Three and Four at Harrisburg Park, that project has started. We're starting the design on that contract signed today, so we would expect to move pretty rapidly out there. We intend to have that project completed for spring youth athletics season, so stay tuned. We should be doing a lot out there by the time we get out to the Christmas tree lighting event. We are also wrapping up the playground at Harrisburg Park. We intend to look at some dates, the end of next week for ribbon cutting to open that back up, but adding the additional play equipment, the shade structures, benches, and field turf out there is wrapping up. The town will have our staff budget retreat next week as well, so similar to what we have as a group, we also do that as a staff, where we'll be rolling out our innovation and efficiency proposals that directors and departments will push up to management, and we'll also discuss kind of all of the challenges that we have coming up as far as operations and as well as capital expenses, looking at new projects that our departments need for the upcoming year. And you also notice, you know, a new part of this year's budget, and really just part of our operational structure is benchmarking. As you guys know, that, you know, our staff tends to be very competitive, and the way that we measure that success is by benchmarking, right? We just won the award for healthiest employer in the state. The only way to tell how we're doing is to look at our peer groups and evaluate that, and that helps us know where we're at. This month, we'll have several departments going out to do kind of talk and analysis on data and strategy. What are the other communities similar to us? It'll really be peer-to-peer discussions. The School of Government puts that on, and so they're hosting that event. They also host the kind of benchmarking platform that we'll be getting more and more into. Fire, HR, Public Works, all going this month to meet their peer groups and kind of compare notes, so to speak. And the data for benchmarking is live now on a dashboard, so anybody can view that in the community, the council, and then certainly we'll be feeding our data into that quarterly and updating that and just tracking where we're at on a myriad of benchmarks. One department may have, especially departments that are very easily benchmarked, like Fire or Public Works, they may have, you know, 100 benchmarks. Not that we'll be tracking all of those, but the things that we do track, we'll be feeding into there to see not only how are we doing, but help the state as a whole, you know, identify efficiencies and kind of share notes across the board. And last but not least on this, I'll be presenting at the December meeting our first quarterly report for the town, where you'll see a lot of the kind of health of the town, state of the town will be, this will be formatted somewhere in between government and private sector, so we'll be very numbers-heavy, so that it looks kind of like a publicly traded company report, where you can see, hey, how many calls to customer service do you have? How many work orders have we completed? Where are we at on our permits? Are they 90% closed out for the quarter? Lots of stuff like that, and we'll be really excited. We're wrapping that up shortly and presenting that at the December meeting. That is all I have for this evening, but I'll take any questions from Mayor, Council, or anybody that has them.
Any questions for Rob? Okay, sir, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our finance report with Brian Lee. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is your finance report as of October 31st, which is one-third of the way through the fiscal year. So you can see tax collections and general fund revenue both increased by 5% from last month. Over the next two months, we'll see the vast majority of tax collections come in for the year, so these should be probably in green next month, and then we'll be in great shape for the rest of the fiscal year. The Water and Sewer Fund is at 37%. One contributing factor to that bumping up a little bit more than expected is we've sold about 175,000 of capital assets that we've replaced this year, so we've had some really good sales on the equipment that we've been able to upgrade this year. That's in that operating number, so it's bumping that up a little bit. If not for that, it would be about 35%, which is what we had seen up until this point, about 2% ahead of our budget. The Stormwater Fund is right on target at 33%. Now, looking down at departmental expenditures over operations, you see all of the general government departments here are either 29 or 31%, so consistency across there, but no concerns. The Communications Department has bumped up a little bit this month, up 11% from last month. We're spending a lot on the communication effort for the comp plan. A lot of that is housed in the Communications Department, so you see some of that there, but that will, of course, smooth out as we make our way through the year. Same story for our remaining general fund departments, all shown in the green here. Parks and Rec is in the yellow at 38%, but as I've said for a couple of months, that's all related to the event season, so that will also smooth out throughout the year. The Water and Sewer Fund is at 30%, so in really great shape with 37% of revenues and only 30% of expenditures, and the Stormwater Fund is right on target at 33. Salaries across the whole town at 30%, which is tracking with last year's annual results of about 11, 12% off of the annual budget. So all in great shape across operations there. Now, moving into our project dashboard, here's a look at the single-year projects. First one to draw your attention to is the ADA Sidewalk Program. That's about 15% complete. That work in Kensington Forest has begun and should be wrapped up this month, and that really accounts for the majority of this annual budget. We've got about 10,000 or 15,000 left for spot improvements. In case anything pops up throughout the year, we can address that, but our big project will be taken care of this month. This is a look at our new Harrisburg Park Monument Sign, shared with the Y. So it is built and looks very nice. The only thing left to finish off on this project is getting power connected to it, working with Duke Energy on that, and once that happens, it'll be backlit, so it'll be the first of our monument signs to have that backlight component to it. Here's our multi-year projects in design. Pedestrian Facility on Oakley Drive is about 35% through design and engineering. This one is being engineered in-house, so it'll be one of our faster engineering projects making its way to construction. This is probably one of the biggest things that I heard at a lot of our comp plan neighborhood meetings, was the need for pedestrian facility on Oakley. So that was nice. I was able to say, well, it's in design right now, so you'll actually see something built pretty soon in response to your comments, so that was kind of a positive from some of those neighborhood meetings. The Woodside Drive Pedestrian Facility is another that's very similar to that project. That one's on the agenda tonight for professional engineering contracts. I'll let John share the details on that project. And now, moving over to our multi-year construction projects. Rob mentioned the progress out at Harrisburg Park. Here's a look at the shade structures. The playground equipment would be in the far right side of this picture, and that was actually, looked like it was getting finished up at the end of last week. So all of this is coming together, and like Rob said, we'll have a ribbon cutting next week, and this will be fully placed into service. Here's a look at Veterans Park. We have our rededication ceremony tomorrow morning, but everything here is pretty much ready. There will be a little bit of remaining work on the plaques inside the monuments, but aside from that, even the punch list items have been cleared as of right now. Here's a look at our equipment projects for the year, so everything has gotten off the ground in some form. Two to point out here are the golf carts and the side-by-side for the deputies. Those have been ordered. They were in stock, so we'll get those, get the lights and striping put on those, and they should be placed in service very quickly. Swiftwater tent for the Fire Department, this is a new item on this list, is a result of the Inbridge Grant that we got a couple of months ago, so this is a tent that they can take on their deployments. The ends close on it. It has an HVAC system in it, so they can get out of the elements, they can have a decent place to sleep while they're deployed for a week or two, so a really good use of the Inbridge funds for that Swiftwater team. And one item was moved to complete this month, and that's a replacement Kubota for the Water and Sewer Department, and I showed a picture of that a couple of months ago as we were getting that wrapped up. Here's a look at the vehicle projects. I don't think we have anything to report here other than just some build progress on some of the larger ones, so we'll skip over that. And then professional services projects, just some standard progress here. The audit is complete, but we are working on adding the components for the award submission that I've mentioned a couple of times, so finishing out a couple of those, and it should be submitted to the state this month. And I would welcome any questions.
Can you go back to the, there was a vehicle canceled?
Yes, so we did have the deputy vehicles that we were going to purchase this year for next year, and Captain Nash had said that she doesn't need those purchased this year for next year, based on the mileage that we've seen on some of the vehicles, so we're able to hold off on those and look at them again in budget season. So we've marked them ourselves as canceled. We're not going to, you know, pursue anything right now, but the budget authorization is there, and then we'll revisit how all the vehicles are looking as we go back through the budget season.
Okay. Will that money be repurposed for anything?
It would just remain in the reserve, ready for the same purpose.
Got it.
Any other questions for Brian?
As a follow-up to that, I remember part of the reason why we agreed to go ahead and purchase was because of the build time.
Mm-hmm. I think that's improved pretty drastically, so I think it's a component of not needing the entire year lead time on those vehicles, and then also the mileage and condition of the ones we have now are better than expected as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
There's also several batches there. I asked, I asked the same question.
Several what?
There's several batches of cars there that you see. Only one is our replacement. There are some new ones, and those are the ones we talked about, build times. We weren't sure if we'd have the deputies quite in time, so those ones are moving forward. The ones that are a replacement, those vehicles are just in great shape.
Any other questions for Brian?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have Lieutenant Helms with our law enforcement update this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So for the month of October, we had 4,532 calls for law enforcement-related activities, including in those are 2,125 security checks and 959 traffic stops and a average non-emergency response time of 6 minutes and 8 seconds. Also, as Cassie mentioned, we did the Citizens Academy, which was a good time up at the Sheriff's Office. And we actually took possession of the side-by-side last week, and the golf carts are expected to be in this Thursday. So that's about it. You got any questions?
Any questions for Lieutenant Helms? Thank you, sir. Next up, we have our Fire Department updates with Chief Dunn.
And they're easy tonight. All right, for the month of October, the Fire Department report. Fire marshal activities, you can see did some consultations, pre-submittals, special event planning. Of course, October was Fire Prevention Month, so a lot of activities with fire prevention that we'll get into a little bit later, but that was the week of the 5th to the 11th. And then we have a breakdown again later in the presentation. Again, a graph of just the general inspections that our Fire Marshal's Office does. We actually did one at the elementary schools this particular month, some COs, consultations, foster care, et cetera. Completed 38 inspections for the month of October, and in every month, we present you with one of the violations that we find in our community. The one to the right is a fire alarm panel which has no cover on it, which is an electrical hazard for the occupants of the building, so they will correct that. And again, a breakdown of some of the violations that we do see. Fire extinguishers is always up there, emergency lighting, access, fire alarm system testing, and things of that nature. As far as operational statistics, we did respond to 270 incidents in the month of October. Our average response time was a little under 4 minutes, at 3 minutes and 50 seconds, which is actually down from the prior month, as correlated in this particular chart, which is actually a good thing, because they were out of pocket or out of the station quite a bit during those fire prevention activities, so proud to see that. As far as fires in the month of October, we did have three, none were in our district, but we did assist Charlotte with one and assisted Midland with another, and I think you're aware, we did assist Concord with a fire in a mobile home park just there by the Speedway, which was a fatality death. Station One continues to lead the pack, followed closely by Two and Three. Again, a breakdown of the types of incidents that we do respond to, with the majority being EMS-related, traffic accident-related. And this correlates to the location of the incidents in the month of October. And then as far as some operational updates, again, we did have Fire Prevention Month in October. We did do schools and daycares with a little under 3,000 people in front of, community education classes, a little over 330 people, and then the big number at the end, the Fire Prevention Trailer and Halloween events. And you're trying to wonder how in the world we saw 355,000 people. So what the state and what ISO allows us to do in fire prevention activities is, a couple of years ago, we purchased a trailer for the Fire Marshal's Office, which is wrapped in fire or smoke alarm education and several other things. So we came up with a brilliant idea. We parked it along Highway 49 for a week, parked it along Rocky River Road at Station Two for a week, and parked it at Station Three on Rocky River Road for a week. So if you go to NCDOT and the traffic counts for those particular roads, that adds up to that particular number. So maybe some of y'all saw them in those locations.
We did.
And with that, I'll take some questions.
Any questions for Chief Dunn?
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just a few mayor comments this evening. I would like to extend our heartfelt condolences to the Schu family on the passing of County Commissioner Lynn Schu. He served as county commissioner for 20 years and then was also on the school board previously. I had the honor of serving on him, serving with him on the Centralina Board. I can tell you that his servant heart was always at the forefront of his leadership, and as we are honoring veterans this week, he was also, he also served in the US Army, so please keep his wife Patty and their children and extended family in your prayers. I actually believe the visitation was tonight, so we were unable to attend that, but we certainly are thinking of the Schu family. I'd also like to thank our Parks and Rec team for another amazing trick-or-treat event. I think we had record participation and vendors set up, lots of, lots of kids, so it was fun to see them all dressed up. We've talked about our One Harrisburg Comp Strategy Plan. It's been really wonderful to see our community so engaged in that. That was really one of the initiatives on the council side, was meeting our community where they were at, and I think strategically, having these meetings out in the public has been wonderful. We have several coming up. I think there's two this week, and all of those dates can be found on our website. I'll tell you that we have had twice as many surveys as any other survey that the town has put out before, and the survey is still open until November 21st, so we encourage everyone in the community to take that. It's pretty simple, and then please come to one of the meetings. I think you'll be able to engage with council, see some great graphs, and really kind of be a part of that long-term planning that we are tasked with up here. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, as you heard, and we hope that you will join us at Veterans Park beginning at 10:30 a.m. It is going to be chilly, so dress accordingly. Mike promises for a quicker invocation than normal. I kid, I kid. But really, this is so that we can honor our brave men and women who have served our country, and there will also be a special park rededication where you can see the newly renovated elements. It's absolutely beautiful, and I hope that it provides some peace and solemn to those that visit that. We hope you'll mark your calendars and join us for the Christmas tree lighting. It's so strange that I even have to say that, because I don't feel like we're already here, but that is coming up on Friday, December 5th, and that is at, from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. at Harrisburg Park. Glad the election is behind us. I do want to thank those that ran and looking forward to working with our two new folks that were elected. Councilman Duvanen, we certainly hope to engage with you in several other, other ways over the next few months, so we appreciate your service as well. And that wraps up my comments. Are there any council comments this evening?
I just had a couple of things. The healthy award is fantastic. I don't know if you read through the criteria for that. It's not just about doing push-ups in the gym. It's about a healthy, safe, working environment that encourages employees, and we don't always pay the most, but we try to create a great working environment. Nice to see that recognized. I think that'll make our good employees stick with us through thick and thin, so congratulations on that. I'd like to thank Mike for all your service. Man, what a squeaker. Close, close. But we appreciate your dedication, and we look forward to working with you, Mayor, and our team. Congratulations, and two new members coming on board, and we'll soldier on, so thank you for that, and two more years.
I would say, you know, I know we have an amazing Fire Department, but to get to just see them in action earlier tonight. I joked with Captain Johnston that I would brag on him, but he really is awesome, younger kids that were out there, and he showed up very professional, compassionate, waiting on an adult to get there, and he was, you know, I think truly just being who he is, he's the same time, same way every time I see him, but was, you know, made sure they were okay, and was like, have you called a parent? Let's get a parent out here. So I genuinely appreciate all of our public servants. So I genuinely appreciate all of our public servants, but especially Captain Johnson and them out there tonight. Our Pop Warner teams, you know, I, I tend to be highly critical of them and I recognize that, but I'm really proud of them. They're doing amazing. Nine U lost on Saturday, but the other two teams are continuing to advance, so I'm really excited about that. I know last year we were concerned that we didn't hear Harrisburg Cowboys. We were watching the videos. I need you to know every play. We heard Harrisburg, we never heard Cowboys. It was this play by Harrisburg, so that was great. So, but I know this time last year when we were talking about them, we, as a council, set aside, or we used some of our special funding to give them money to go to Nationals should they need it. Fortunately, it's here, well, Charlotte this year, in our area anyway. But I do, you know, I recognize as a council, we do a fantastic job of making sure that we keep national issues, national issues. However, in what that said, knowing that we spent that money last year, seeing where we are now, and recognizing that we have roughly 20% of our students at Higuita High School that are recipients of free and reduced lunch, I would ask our council to use some of our special funds to make sure that we have food in our food pantry at Rocky River. So many of our community members are using them, and you'll see that they're posting that the pantries are empty. The Lions Club continues to refill as they can, but they're asking for donations. So I would ask that we make sure that we're taking care of our community and putting some funding towards that.
Everybody kind of looked at me for that. I, I think the obvious question on that was, is that something we can do? And I don't know the answer to that because in the 65-year history of SNAP funding in this country, we've never had it lapse. So this is all kind of novel. That's something I run by Lee and, and Brian and, and Rich to see what. It's not typically in our allowable expenditures for local government, which I think a lot of states and local areas have tried to be creative with that. Counties have a little bit more flexibility since they, they do have some direct allocation for things like that. Typically, ad valorem tax and sales tax aren't in that arena, but we could certainly look and, and get back with you on it.
Yeah, I, we were talking, I know it was brought up at the commissioners' meeting, but I think they too were having to look to see what the options were.
As I said, my understanding is counties have a little bit different.
Right.
You know, allocation for health and human service stuff. Towns don't have any allocation or ad valorem, and our sales have certain restrictions to them. I'm not saying you can't, I'm just saying I don't think anybody's ever tested it because we've never needed it.
Let's do it. Let's test it.
Yeah, well, let's, um, let's, let's be a little more prudent with that. Perhaps you and Rich can get together and kind of discuss that because I do remember seeing something in the news about some federal agencies coming after states that were kind of going against that program. There was something about that that didn't sound good, so why don't you all first look into it?
We'll look into it. I mean, I'm hopeful that the government's reopening and I think the, you know, I, I think these folks have come to some agreement, and this might be a very short issue, but an issue nonetheless, that we'll look into it.
Well, double check me. I'm like 99% sure that the free and reduced lunch had nothing to do with the federal SNAP shutdown. I think those ran.
So I use that as a point of reference because it's means-based. So if we have a population here that needs assistance, why would we not help them, ensuring that we have food? I don't think that's an issue.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm not against it in theories. Are we in, what, are we not going to start giving to every charity?
Well, we're going to give our community.
I mean, our, our job is to run the town.
Have you talked to the school board and expressed your thoughts about it to them?
So I'm focused on what's happening in Harrisburg, like in ensuring, like, that people within our community have access to food.
Yeah, I think it's two-part. I mean, I think you're talking about food pantries and availability for families to go in and do that, and then you're talking about school and their ability to feed kids.
I know this, I'm pretty sure the school wasn't.
At the very least, let's encourage everyone in the population to be aware of that there are, first of all, there are food pantries. Unless, like, if I wasn't on the forum, I don't think I would have even been aware that there are food pantries in Harrisburg, and there's more than one. So, you know, perhaps people can really help pitch in and help each other in these times.
I was there Saturday morning at the food pantry at Rocky River Presbyterian and multicultural Knights, and another group that lives in the Mills had quite a bit of food. But they served 59 families last week, and that was up from around 35 is what they normally average. They are anticipating that to continue to rise, but they are receiving some assistance from several community organizations. So it was good to see community participation in that part, and I think part of that education is folks don't know it's there because even some of the community that came to donate did not know it was there. They're like, oh, we're collecting food, didn't realize this was in our backyard, that we could continually come and provide food. I think there are several businesses that also have, are collecting for the food pantry as well. I think Percent is one of them. So, yeah, I know, I know that the food pantry has reached out to some of the folks that they have worked with in the past to express, hey, we're really running low on some things and we're serving a lot more families than we're normally doing. So I think at a bare minimum, we can focus on some education piece, but maybe get some clarification on what our options are, if any, and if there's anything that we can go to the school board with.
Yeah, yeah, no, certainly we can, we can encourage. But, you know, that's not, really not a, an issue, and we'll look into, into that specific issue again. It's just, it's never really come up. The states found out pretty quick, even the states that wanted to fund it directly, they couldn't. And, and so then the states were trying to find ways to get nonprofits involved to, to make sure that people didn't go hungry and worse. So, yeah, not a, not a situation you want to be in. It's certainly something for us to have on our radar because if they do reopen the government, it's only going to be till February.
Right. Any other council comments this evening? All right, thank you all. We do not have any public hearings this evening, so we do have one item under Old Business, and I believe Brian is talking on that, right? Okay. Making sure I write that down correctly. It's for the consideration of the final resolution requesting the private sale of the general obligation transportation bond.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening again. So last month, we went over the history of the general obligation bonds and some of the projects that we funded, so I'll save the time on that. So wanted to jump right into, over the past month, we issued an RFP out to about 60 financial institutions for the private placement of these bonds, and we had six banks respond, some of those offering multiple options back to us. So we had about nine or 10 loans, loan offerings to look through as a result of that proposal. Whenever we review those proposals, we're looking at rates, any specific terms, prepayment provisions, all sorts of details in there that can make one more attractive than another. But we're also at the same time required to compare the one that we select with the results from a traditional public sale. And not only do we need to show that, we need to present it to the LGC and essentially convince the LGC that the private placement with a bank is more beneficial to the town than a true traditional public sale of the bonds. Given the cost for the town to have a, a bond rating, as well as all the issuance cost with traditional public sales, it was far more expensive than the option that we chose here with private placement with the bank. So that, that led us on in our RFP to choose one of the respondents, one of the six respondents. And the three that we narrowed it down to that had the most attractive provisions of the debt were Pinnacle, JP Morgan Chase, and First National Bank. So the offering that we ended up selecting was from Pinnacle Bank, and that was for 2.35 million, which completes our $4 million authorization that we received back in 2017. This 2.35 addresses the Stallings Road sidewalk, phases one and two, Highway 49 improvements in and in front of Town Center, and two traffic mitigation projects with Roberta Road and Cambridge Drive Extension and Greenway. And all of these projects have been completed except for Cambridge, which is currently under construction. So again, we chose Pinnacle Bank, the rate of 3.81%, and with approval tonight, the LGC's approval on December 2nd, we would have closing for this loan on December 11th. Some of the important provisions of this loan that made Pinnacle the winning financial institution were they, Pinnacle had the lowest bank fees of any of the respondents. So that's obviously puts more of the financing proceeds into the project fund versus some of the bank fees. Their early payoff penalty structure was pretty attractive as well. As you can see, in the first five years, we have a 5% penalty in year one, decreasing down to 1% in year five. It is very highly unlikely that we would either refinance this loan or pay it off in the first five years. So that was pretty attractive to us that in year six through 15, there's no penalty. This is one of the places where the banks can kind of play with their rates and the early payoff to make sure they get the return that they want. And so the, the results here were all over the board. So this is one of the main places that we can kind of find the one that suits us the best. So having that flexibility in year six through 15 was, was really nice. Another thing to consider is where are the funds going to be held when the loan closes, but before we're able to draw those down? So in our case with this one, most of those projects are complete, and so we'll immediately reimburse ourselves on the vast majority of this loan. The only thing that we'll be waiting on is the Cambridge Drive project, which we are making progress payments on. So the amount of money that'll be in this account is pretty low compared to the issuance amount, and the amount of time that it'll be in this account in particular will also be pretty short. So that was a pretty small consideration for us at 2.85% compared to our about 4.1 right now. It is lower, but the, the difference in what we could earn is, is very low on what we're going to have in this account for that amount of time. So given those and some of the other minor provisions, this was the most attractive loan that we got out of the bid process. So here you can see the payment schedule with the principal payments annually of about 157,000 and 156 in the last couple of years. And you can see the interest component there. So our total debt service starts at about 237,000 and works its way to about 162 by the end in November of 2040. When we plan for these in the financial model, we usually leave them flat, and so we see, just as a conservative budgeting, so we see a nice kind of relief in the financial model as we get out 10, 15 years based on this payment schedule. And so with that, I would be glad to answer any questions.
Brian, just a couple of questions. So I know you're in the calc, was this purely numbers or was there any other intangibles? I know Pinnacle is very active here. I don't see a JP Morgan on the corner. Did that play any role or was it no blind taste test, just?
We would like to, to help our partners in the area, but Pinnacle had the best rate, the best early payoff provision. So it really wasn't much of a, of a discussion with the others.
And do you see any scenario that we would, I know you don't like to pay things off early, but would we pay this off in year six or seven or?
I mean.
I doubt it.
I doubt it, yeah.
You're consistent.
We give you the, the finance is we don't need to borrow it.
Yeah.
You know, we, we could not borrow it, but our residents asked us to borrow it.
Got it.
And so we'd have to go against the will of the people to not issue.
Yeah.
These bonds. Otherwise, we'd probably be coming here saying, eh, we're probably, we'll, we'll issue this cash, cash-funded and, and not debt. But if you go to a referendum of the people and they say, do something, I recommend we do it.
And this gives us the, the ultimate flexibility with these funds. We have the cash for the next couple of years while we have this debt service. So if something comes up where you need to use those funds on a project, we've got it, but we can't go back and issue this debt in a couple of years.
Do they have the right to sell this or will you always be dealing with?
They can't, they can sell it.
They can sell it.
Yeah, they can reassign it. I haven't seen that before though with our debt.
As far as this debt being issued as private placement, is that how historically we've been issuing debt or?
Yes, our first general obligation bonds, the 1.65 was also private placement with Sterling Bank. With, the, the credit rating cost itself is enough for us not to really consider that option until we're talking about 15 million bond issuance or greater probably.
Any other questions for Brian? Okay, with that, is there a motion to adopt a final resolution requesting the private sale of 2.35 million in general obligation transportation bond, Series 2025 to Pinnacle Bank, which includes 2.35 million not to exceed value, an interest rate of 3.81% and a payment term not to extend beyond November 1st, 2040? Second?
Third.
All in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
We will move into new business, and we do have two items this evening. The first up is a consideration of professional engineer services contract for TIP project. That's the Main Street Roberta Road, and Devin is with us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As Mayor said, this is the consideration for the professional services contract for the Main Street Roundabout. As part of our continuing efforts to try to help mitigate the traffic and flow throughout the, the town, this roundabout has been proposed here. This is kind of a result of a traffic study that was performed back in 2019 that, for a private project, that did not move forward, but it still identified the need for improvements at this intersection. So as part of the effort of NCDOT and the town as well, we want to limit the number of extra signals around about, we feel is a great option, so that's why this has been proposed and moved forward. We applied, staff applied for a CMAC congestion mitigation air quality grant back in September of 2023, and this was followed by the municipal agreement being approved between us and the NCDOT in December of 2024. So the scope of this project will include some additional traffic impact analysis to, to right-size this, this roundabout to make sure that it's going to last for, and serve the future traffic for, for a reasonable amount of time into the future. And then the, the final delivery of the con, of this specific contract is to provide us with a complete set of documents, construction documents, that we can move forward with prospective construction consultant contractors. As part of the process for the grant funds that we received for this project, the request for letters of interest was published in March of 2025 earlier this year, and we did receive non-responses from that staff. The selection committee reviewed those, and you can see some of the scores here. RK and K did come out with a higher score based on the, the scores that we assigned to that. And then this, this scope includes, the scope, the fees, and the contract have all been reviewed and approved by DFT to move forward with execution. This is a prospective schedule for this moving forward, estimated schedule. If you can see some of the milestones throughout there, and this will put us with estimated construction bidding for July 2027 to move forward with them. And the fiscal impact of this contract is 616,536.60. Of that, 80% of it is reimbursable, and you can see that amount there, leaving the town with a 20% cost total of 123, $307.32. And the total approved budget for the project overall is $3,305,800. And with that, I'll take any questions.
As part of their evaluation, you know, I guess, you know, the plan, are they going to tell us what the long-term and short-term impact is? In other words, if there's barrels out there for the next three years, it's like, what are we doing?
Yeah, we'll have a plan moving forward for construction. They'll, they'll give us the traffic control plan. NCDOT will cry that, will require, will want to see that from them to make sure that it's a manageable plan. If you look, there's a couple of different options that are super conceptual right now. Obviously, it'll be welded down, but the reason there's two option, options is that's some of the things that were thought of initially, just like what's easier to construct.
So there's a plan to keep the traffic flowing while we're building?
There will be, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
I know this is just the contract, but just when you get to the design phase, just make sure we do the big roundabout. I know you know this, Rob. I know that you knew of this, but let's not screw it up like they did way down Roberta Road. I want them to go through that one and be like, this roundabout is terrible, and then get to ours and go, this is how you do a roundabout. So let's just make sure they do it properly, school buses.
We're going to call it the Main Street Roundabout and not the Roberta Road Roundabout.
Good idea.
Has its own TikTok.
We don't want a TikTok for this one.
Which if you haven't seen, it's entertaining. Check it out. Check it out.
There is just one other thing, and I know you get to the design phase later, come back to us, but if there is a chance for branding out there that it's Main Street, sign looks wonderful, YMCA sign looks wonderful, the planner boxes look wonderful, let's not just have a big grassy hill with, you know, uncut grass.
We'll certainly consider that throughout the design contract and and take that.
Yeah, Devin, flip back to the to the aerial plan view, if you don't mind, because I actually think there's some opportunity. If you notice how this this would be offset, so this would all become green space here. So we have plenty of opportunity to either look at that for commercial development or we can, we can take some of that roadway back and, as you said, art, green space, gathering places, branding, signage, all of that good stuff out there.
Were you pointing to the right side of the screen?
Yes.
It's going to be green, okay.
Yep. Yeah, if we go that that way. And and I don't, you know, don't, the these are, these are preliminary things that, you know, I know you guys all know this, we don't have a ton of people in the audience tonight, but for those that are going to watch this on a delay or send me 35 emails tomorrow, this does not connect into Old Harrisburg. The roundabout does provide a stub if that is going to be business development there, if there is ever going to be a connection there, that that's a year or two down the road and a conversation to have after the roundabout is constructed. And some improvements in in the Woodside area also on the agenda tonight are not a connection out to Roberta. So before anybody jumps on that and comes to December asking us to not connect into Old Harrisburg, neither of those projects do that. That would be a standalone project in and of itself when that time comes, if that time comes. But that would require us to to engage the community out there and and talk through what that looks like.
Can you show that other concept? I think that's that had what you were talking about.
Yeah, this one, yes.
So this is really what we're talking about, and that stub may be even shorter, just depending.
Yeah, and that, you know, if depending how far that that stub comes out in a final design, that outside lane, you may have seen some of these roundabouts that have this that would be bollered on the outside lane so that you can't, you know, you're not going to go in here and then have nowhere to go, but you would want to put that in from a drainage standpoint and and get as much as you can and as much bang for your buck as you can because this is a federally funded project. You're going to take advantage of that 80% as much as you can and at least provide access to whatever we'll develop there if there is not a connection.
And the 80% is for the design, but then also for the construction, we're getting the 80% as well, right?
It is up to a cap.
Okay.
And and that cap is lower than our project cost, and we've had previous conversations about that. But as we bring further contracts to you, we'll show that split each time.
Okay. Any other questions for Devin or Rob? Okay, with that, is there a motion to approve and authorize a town manager to execute the professional engineering services contract, Main Street Roundabout to RK and K in the amount not to exceed 616,536.60? Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion.
Second? Second. All in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you so much, Devin.
Thank you.
And our last item under new business tonight is consideration of contract with McGill and Associates to perform a design for pedestrian infrastructure improvements on Woodside Drive from Patricia Avenue to Autumn Drive. Welcome, Jonathan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Glad to be up here tonight. Present the last item on our business. This is a consideration of professional services for design contract on Woodside Drive. We've already mentioned this tonight a couple of times. This is a new project. It was in our budget last year, but then it comes with a request from citizens for walkability and general pedestrian access in this area. Does include a typical town of Harrisburg street section, which we will see on the next slide, which does include a sidewalk on one side and storm drains upgrades. Also ties into some storm drains upgrades that were done in this area several years ago. And so we're going to be including that as part of this project, again, making those connections and upgrading. That'll be really helpful, I know, in that that area right now. This is the recommended project, kind of basic, but from Patricia over to Autumn on Woodside Drive, you can see that typical section on the left-hand side there, does include a sidewalk on one side. Not sure what side that'll be on. I know it shows it on the left. Really is determined by what happens when you get out in the field, kind of where the right-of-way is at. We do feel like we've got plenty of right-of-way on this corridor. It's kind of open, so we do feel like we got the opportunity to get that in place. There will also be a public meeting that'll be associated with this. We do anticipate in that 30% design timeframe of having a public meeting out in the community, kind of talk through some of that scenario. That'll likely be spring, maybe April, somewhere in that timeframe. So we do anticipate that. We'll obviously get that through our communication staff and stuff as well. Again, the cost is probably a contract of 148,300, and will be funded by capital reserve funds planned in fiscal year '26 budget, NCIP, and then the total budget of the project was 1.123 million for design and construction. Construction will be a later phase, obviously. And then project does meet our town goals of providing safe, well-maintained, and dependable public sales, these systems and services. With that, I will take questions.
Any questions for Jonathan?
You go back to the dying ramp for just one second.
Sure, yes, sir.
Okay, this is wonderful, but I figure those folks have been on Woodside for a long time. They're aware if there's an easement through there, or have they planted bushes and mailboxes and driveways and all kinds of stuff? Are we going to get any blowback, even though I know this is completely positive project?
That's a great question. So there is a large right-of-way through there. Sometimes folks are not necessarily aware of that. Again, that's one of the reasons why we want to have a public meeting out there, make them aware. Typically, in those scenarios, when we're having these type of public meetings, we'll go over those types of things. And I mentioned about the sidewalks, that's one of your things that you're looking at. A lot of times, we'll sit sidewalks because there may be issues on one side, less driveways, whatever it happens to be. A lot of those things will be worked out in design, but that's why we do have the public meeting to make those folks aware of, hey, you've got a mailbox, we'll move that. You got a, you know, some flowers, whatever, maybe something we had to replant, but that's that's the main reason.
Or 30-foot camper that I can no longer.
Yeah, yeah. Those happen as well. Yeah, that is true. You typically do not have the case where there's a lot going on. Most of the, most of the folks understand that their yard goes up to a certain point. Typically, it's the back of the ditch. So you've got ditch sections out there right now, and they, most of them understand that those are being maintained by some public entity, in this case, the town of Harrisburg. So they understand that, you know, there's opportunities for things to happen in those corridors.
And this is certainly one of those neighborhoods that we often get communication that they want sidewalks because of traffic and just not able to safely navigate. And I think this is one of those places where you've got to start somewhere, and this is the logical spot to start.
It really is.
It's a big project.
Yeah, it's a great, I think it's a great place to start. Again, it goes back to town manager's comments, just making that connection, going ahead and starting those pieces. This is a really good place to do that.
And you're going to lose the ditch, right? You're going to put RCP and tie into what you've already done.
That is correct. Yes, sir. We are losing the ditch, tying into some of those existing improvements along there and putting in catch basins. Hadn't determined what kind of curve that'll be, but likely be stand-up curve. We'll see when we get there. Again, that's really determined on that slope. It's pretty flat out there. When you start to build up those slopes, you can get a little bit of range, and you definitely don't want to trap water. So we've got to pick all that into consideration.
So like, if you went out there and put paint markings on the ground, it's not as bad as you think on paper.
No.
Because basically, the two ditches are unusable on each side, right?
That's correct.
You're going to put RCP sidewalk. It it should like be a couple of feet we're eating that really is all it is.
I am very conservative when I'm doing these kind of projects. I'll go out and make and take a look at those things really quickly, determine where that sidewalk needs to be, you know, making sure we can tie in really well on either side, whatever happens to be. You are removing that ditch, which is very helpful. Most of these ditches are filled in anyway, so a lot of people are actually adding to them already in Old Harrisburg. You know, we've got, you know, we've got issues like that a lot. Hey, we want to put, you know, put pipe in this ditch, we're definitely going to be doing that. And it just takes care of that before you even have to go along those corridors. And yeah, it is, if you'd go market on the field today, I think the the road out there right now is roughly 18 to 20 feet. I'm guessing we're shooting for 22, and then you're going to have curb and gutter goes along with that. So it's really not a lot of impact.
10-4.
I got to be honest, I'm a little concerned with this project because I know there were some people on that street who have spoke up against it previously. And I was really hoping that we will have some people here either speaking for or against it from that street so that we would know. And I know this project is going to cost over a million to just put those sidewalks, right? So and we want to spend money that would benefit most of people in our community and people on that street. They want to probably have sidewalks, the ones that do, just to have a sidewalk there. I don't know if they want to have a lot of people coming there. Like, honestly, I think that it would be, in my opinion, money would be better spent to, you know, put those walking trails in the historical, you know, Farm Mill Park or maybe, you know, some towards the Greenway. I know our Greenway budget is only like 2, 250 grand a year, and that's, you know, this would be like four years' worth of our Greenway projects right there. I'm just, just really struggling with this one. I wish we could do public comment piece before needing to spend 150,000, you know, going there to the people and just seeing what they think.
Yeah, I think that's where John and I had the conversation of the 30% plan. So you don't have anything to talk. We've talked about everything we can from a conceptual standpoint, but until you have survey and some plans and can mark the ground out there and say, hey, look, here's what nine feet looks like, it's going two feet this way and seven feet this way, there's really nothing else to to really talk about. So we programmed it in the in the budget, and I agree, and you and I had talked about, you know, this kind of the the cost and and use, but the feedback that we've gotten, and make no mistake, somebody won't like this project. We, it's my 23rd year in local government, and I've yet to have 100% approval project. Somebody doesn't want it for some reason. But in the nine years that I've been here, every year, more than one person has come and said, I want sidewalks in Old Harrisburg. And I fear if we, you know, we we should engage the public and make sure that, yes, the actual homeowners out there want it. If they don't want it, then we shouldn't do things that people don't want. But let's say, you know, some of our park projects and think, that Old Harrisburg isn't attached to that. And and the criticism we've gotten for the past decade is, yeah, you're putting a greenway out here, you're putting a park out there, you're doing it, but what about us? We've always been here, we have no sidewalks, we have ditches, we don't have curb, we don't have, and our kids have to play in the street, and that's where people speed through. And so it's kind of, we do have to start somewhere, and this was, this was that start. But ultimately, if Old Harrisburg and that area says, hey, we don't want sidewalks, and that's what the majority of the people out there, I expect the council would look at that 30% and go, wow, we just have overwhelming hatred for all of this out there. I I think you're going to find a mixed bag. I think you're going to find a lot of people that say, yeah, about time you're investing in my neighborhood, and a handful of people that say, I don't want anything. I want you to get out of here because I like my camper in my front yard, right? You know, I like the ditch, you know, for whatever reason. Or, you know, some people just are negative. And and so, you know, anytime we're appropriating funds for a lot of projects and something has to be on the on the cutting block, there's, there's some struggle there. But the only money we've spent in in Old Harrisburg is fixing old water and sewer lines and doing the system A storm project in the past 10 years. So I do think at some point, we got to do something in there.
Yeah, and I know, like, we we were looking into parallel, and we had some people come in here, and we had a lady whose, like, dog was hit, and I remember, like, you know, somebody's, like, elbow was hit by a car in parallel. And I feel like you guys have come up with really good design for it, but then the rest of the people that are more vocal started coming out saying, no, 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 we don't want that, don't touch our street, don't do anything. So all that work was done, and now it's just sitting there, this, like, really good plan. So I don't want this one to go by, you know.
I would say this is probably a little bit of a different project because that one was about shifting flow of traffic on the street in one way. And I think that was, that was a majority of the kickback that we got on that. I know even during the one Harrisburg comprehensive plan, I've been at each one of those, and that has come up that, hey, we're still here in Old Harrisburg, and now we have all of the traffic from 49 cutting through, and we have no place safe to walk, and we need sidewalks, with the understanding that we just can't go in and put sidewalks on every single street. That's going to take a lot of time. But they're like, we'll take whatever you can start with. And so I do think when it gets to public, particularly for that group, I think we'll hear from them. They came out last time, I would imagine they would come out much the same for this project. But I know in the four years I've been here, every year it has come up about, hey, can you please help us with something in Old Harrisburg? We don't have any place to go, and now we have way more traffic than we did four years ago. So what do we do?
And I I agree with you conceptually that if you're going to spend dollars, it should improve the lives of more, as many people as you can, like the roundabout, right? Everybody gets a benefit out of that because it reduces traffic congestion. You are right that they were quite upset, you know, every year, like you said, they come in and they say, my streets aren't safe, I want to do something, can you do calming measures? And last year was like, okay, we don't have to take any of your yard if you let us make it one way, and we can put a sidewalk. That was an option. And they said, absolutely not. It's like, okay, well, now if you want sidewalks still, we do have to take a little bit of yard. Are you going to be okay with that? Maybe they will, maybe they won't. I'm also getting concerned that we're not, we're not, we don't have projects that are ready for grant money. We've basically exhausted all of our projects, and we got like half, half of our budget in grant funds to do all these projects that are improving traffic and safety. And if we don't have things that are on the books and designed that we can pull from and apply for a grant, then we're not going to get any more grants, and then it just ends up being taxpayer dollars down the road. So I like, agree with you 100% about the overall cost of the project. I really think we should just like get a design on paper because it's all been very conceptual, and they see colored lines on paper, and they go, absolutely not. But what they want to see is, this is what it's going to do to my piece of property. And can I live with that to get a sidewalk so my kids feel safe and dogs aren't getting run over and all, all kinds of that? I think if you see a hard line on a drawing like that, they'll say, okay, I'm I'm on board. That's just my opinion, but I expect that's how it will go.
And once we have that design, is that something we can use to, are there like grant opportunities that we can try to apply for?
Well, if they're available, yeah. I mean, right now, you know, Ian's been great at pointing this out. It's like, when the economy goes bad, the first thing federal government does is is prime the pump and and push a bunch of money out, right? So, you know, there aren't things sitting there right now because honestly, Harrisburg took it all in the last few rounds. But, you know, they'll replenish that. And if these projects qualify, we would apply for them and then, you know, turn that money in into other things. I'd also point out to to the conversation we had here about like parallel and and the pushback on that project. The pushback on that project was, well, this is, this is cheap, and you guys should just do it like the other roads and put sidewalks, curb and gutter. And, you know, that was what we heard, that we we don't want, you know, for lack of a better term, you know, half you-know-what project. We we want the real thing, we want our roads to look like everybody else's. So come through here and put a real sidewalk in. And and now here we are, and that doesn't mean they won't come out and say, well, I want a sidewalk on both sides. I didn't just want one side, or, you know what, I was bluffing, I didn't want that. I was just figuring it'd be too expensive and that that would run you out. But I think you got to go through those iterations. At some point, that section of Harrisburg, it's getting more and more houses, building on on the infill, younger families are getting in there, there's more kids in there. One of the reasons we we had picked this road was the specific complaints on this road about folks with wheelchairs and and kids riding their bikes and being on that road and the the obvious design implications. It's just flatter. We have somewhere for the water to go. It's it's just a logical choice for it. But I I do think that this is the the better option from the pushback that we got on parallel.
I think a lot of the pushback we we heard from that meeting when the residents of Woodside were here were for the roundabout. I think they didn't want, they didn't want the vehicular traffic to come through there. But a couple of residents I spoke to were, they were like, hey, if you want to put a sidewalk in or put a trail where we can connect to town center, that was, it was a positive conversation that we were having off of that. So I think, you know, having the the roundabout discussion and then coming right behind that and putting out the the sidewalk coming through, I think those are, those are some things are some things we can kind of look at, tweak.
Are there any other questions for Jonathan? With that, is there a motion to authorize town manager to finalize negotiation execution of the attached supplemental service agreement with McGill Associates for an amount not to exceed 148,300?
Not to re-litigate this, but I don't want to do this to you, but is this not something we can do in-house? Do we need an exterior, an external?
Correct. We cannot do this one in-house. There's probably about 20,000 of this at survey, and, and we just don't have that services. The drafting would be difficult. We could do it, but it would not be a very quick process. But I'll let John and Devin and Lee speak to the operations of it. My opinion is probably not, certainly not the, certainly not about 40,000 of it.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have a couple of projects already we're working through. Devin and his team are, I know, kind of been a little bit constrained on that and timeframes have been. But the biggest thing is, is the surveys. We do have to get, we don't have a lot of ass-bill information out there. Obviously, that's going to cost a fairly good chunk of this. I think it's about 30K of that, whatever it is. But that is some of the challenges we run into. And then just timeframe of trying to get it to happen does run into a little bit of that. Again, staff time on other projects. But I know we've got several of those that we're working on that are a little more conducive. I think Oakley Drive is one of those and some of the other ones. So not to say we couldn't. I think we do have the expertise, but it's just the time.
And we need this presented to the neighbors to.
Right.
For community involvement.
Okay, since I brought it back again, I'll make the motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you so much, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Can we, can we make note of itself? Maybe that's a budget item that we get that field set in-house next year for going to be going out.
I was thinking about it.
For surveying?
Yeah.
Capacity.
Do we need another engineer?
We can add a sage, you guys.
Well, one, one more engineer would have paid for that.
There you go.
Yeah.
It's in perpetuity, though. You'd have to have projects for them to work on all the time.
Well, Harrisburg keeps growing.
It does.
That's your, your staff retreat.
At some point, they get too complicated to do in-house. But like, that's fairly easy. You just hire a surveying firm to do that part and then take the survey data and crank it out.
Yeah.
Good discussion.
Agreed. Action items. I have food assistance opportunity that we're going to look into. Did I miss something? I feel like I missed something at the beginning.
What's the one that you'd?
The food assistant?
Oh, the food assistance.
Opportunity.
Yes, obviously. No, that was the, because I didn't write any down.
Okay.
That was the only one.
Perfect. And then we do not have a need for closed session this evening. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone.